Thank you, ma'am. Announcements tonight, Pueblo Parks and Rec, little dribblers basketball registration ends this Friday, September 13th. For more information to register, call 719-553-2790. Saturday, September 14th is the last movies in the park at Pueblo City Park near the rides. Pre-movie activities start around 6:30 and the movie starts as soon as it gets dark. Don't forget to submit your comments to the Public Utilities Commission regarding the Black Hills Energy proposed rate increase. Visit the city of Pueblo website at pueblo.us for more information. I think we've went over it, but you go to the landing page, you'll see where to go. The city of Pueblo and Pueblo County are currently looking to schedule public comment sessions with the PUC. We'll have announcements coming soon about those town halls as soon as they're available. September 15th through 21st is National Child Passenger Safety Week. The Pueblo Police Department is partnering with Drive Smart Pueblo, the Colorado State Patrol, and Pueblo Fire Department to host a free seat check event this Saturday, September 14th, from 9:00 to 1:00 p.m. at Fire Station Number 4 on 2201 Lake Avenue. During the state fair, we had 20-plus officers from the gang unit, narcotics unit, impact teams, dice teams, investigation units, detectives, the traffic unit, and parking enforcers out on overtime, who along with patrol officers conducted over 250 self-initiated calls, made 82 traffic stops, addressed 47 parking complaints, made 10 warrant arrests, issued 56 citations, took 20 felony reports, towed 19 vehicles, and made 16 arrests. The department handled 3,075 calls for service last week. 1,210 of those were dispatched to patrol officers for an average of seven calls for service an hour or 173 calls per day. And that concludes my report.
All righty, thank you, Mr. McCain. Anything from counsel? Mr. Gifford, we are, we were looking to see what is the status on the amended ordinance that we'd been looking at? Is that coming in?
Which amended ordinance are you speaking of?
The camping ban?
I believe it's with the mayor's office. Would you like to give an update on that?
Yeah, councilor Maestro, we have it. There was some concerns with PD about when they pick up the belongings that are left over, how many days they have to keep it. So we're working towards through that, and then you'll see it on your agenda.
Okay, great. Thank you. And now I guess we'll continue. No one else has anything? I guess we'll go ahead and continue with our meeting. I guess you would be from the, have done the compensation study within your Flattery and Hood? Is it Flattery?
Flattery.
Flarity.
Flarity, very close.
I see you found your way.
There's been a few people today.
Yeah. I have that same problem. So I see you made your way to the podium there. Why, would you just like to go ahead and start?
Yeah, we'd love to. Well, good evening, Madam Chairperson and members of counsel. My name is Nicholas Garcia-Lyle. I am a labor and employment attorney by day and by night, a compensation consultant with Flaherty and Hood, and my coworker Ethan.
Yeah, my name is Ethan Runquist, and I'm a compensation consultant with Flaherty and Hood.
So we are from Flaherty and Hood, which is a municipal services-based law firm in the Twin Cities in Minnesota. We serve, let's see, we are also considered what is called the Greater Coalition of Minnesota Cities, which is about 130 member cities. We serve as special labor employment council to about 80-plus cities, a couple of metro cities, including some 80,000-plus population in the Twin Cities. Why are we here? I'll get into that a little more today, but essentially, we come from the state with one of the most comprehensive, rigid, and precise to, at this time, pay equity laws in the country. So as I'll talk a little bit more about later on, a lot of what we'll be talking about is equal pay for equal work. And essentially, the framework that we've developed is tested, it's statutorily adopted in Minnesota first, but it's tested and tested in court and through arbitration. And so we brought that model to the city of Pueblo to consider, to adopt. And so today, we're here to report on some of our findings throughout the study and give, you know, a high-level overview of our recommendation. Let's see. First, we'll go over some of our objectives and methodology, basically the purpose of the study, and then what, a little bit more of the nuances behind what we do to, when you, when you consider and potentially adopt the Flaherty and Hood method, what are you getting out of it? We also will tell you what the city of Pueblo 2024 market position is after the study and after evaluating the data compared to the positions here and the current compensation. And then we have a proposed pay structure, and we'll just show you what that would look like if you were to adopt it. You know, we'll touch a little bit on the economy and how that we've tailored this to have alignment with the economy, and then we have some next steps to go over. So the key objectives of the compensation study was to, you know, review market data. Basically, the folks, when you are recruiting and hiring individuals, although this is local government, and in government, you know, we are mission-driven, not profit-driven, and not competitive. However, in the hiring arena, it is a practical reality that you're competing with other municipalities for some of the same talent. And so we look to cities who are historically considered your comparable communities, some adopted in your ordinance, and we also evaluated the comparability of some of those communities and verified them and included our recommendations on those comparable communities. Then we surveyed those communities to gather the data, compensation data on their like positions that they have, we'll go over a little bit of that too, to assess where does Pueblo fall in the market? So here's the highest payers over here, here's the lowest payers over here, and where in that range, on average, does Pueblo fall? And then we actually nuanced it for every single position to see where each position would fall on that range. We, based on that assessment, we made a recommendation. That recommendation not only factored in the competitive competitiveness components, but the thing that you get from Flaherty and Hood is the pay equity component. We very rigidly evaluate every position to determine it's what's called comparable worth. And so each position is essentially analyzed to determine where it should fall in, in terms of, you know, certain categories, like experience required, education of the job, complexity, supervision. A lot of those are very critical factors when you're determining comparable worth, which is, you know, that is a, that's the system that I was talking about that is tested and statutorily adopted in Minnesota, and it's becoming more of a trend throughout the country and other, like Illinois and Colorado recently adopted a Pay Transparency Act revised version. And so, you know, pay transparency and comparable worth are paralleling throughout the country right now. And so that was an important component to consider for Pueblo, and that is what we did, is we evaluated all the positions that internally to determine their comparable worth. We did, there were some positions that we weren't able to survey because there wasn't a statistic statistically significant, statistically sufficient sample pool for us to gather positions for. So if we gathered the data for you, it would be an outlier. It would be overpaid or be underpaid. It just wouldn't be reliable for you. And so we removed some of those positions and went with a benchmarking method, because some positions, you can tell the, whether or not the work is like inside the organization. And you can determine also, based on internal equity and comparable worth analysis, where they should fall in the organization too. So they don't always necessarily need to rely on external factors like the market. The agencies that we surveyed include a total of 16. We had an 81% response rate. You'll note, there's an asterisk for you that emphasizes that Boulder, Centennial, and Greeley are not traditional comparisons, but they are close enough in population and some other factors that they were included for reference, but they are not determinative. We included some of the other ones you may recognize that are required by your charter. Let's see. Okay. So we surveyed the positions into, and we grouped them into classes to kind of break this down for you. So in your appointed group, there are 28 classes, 28 positions essentially. Number of those that were surveyed was 18, so we surveyed 64% of the appointed group. And that is because there is either not a sufficiently, statistically sufficient amount, or they could very easily be benchmarked, and so we would remove them to increase response rate, because sometimes if you overload with data requests to cities, they will be less inclined to respond based on our experience of management. We, you have 68 positions, and we surveyed 29. So we surveyed 43 appointed, or sorry, appointed general service, 147, and we surveyed 67. We found a lot of those positions could be benchmarked internally. A lot of them, you know, might, for example, might be a level two or a level three. And so we are looking more so at their internal equity than necessarily their external competitiveness, because other communities might not have that amount of levels for each position. And then police and fire, that was also surveyed, and I won't go into too much detail on that because that has already been in the works, but that was part of the data gathering phase. But so we just wanted to let you know that as an FYI. We received statistically sufficient responses for essentially 93 of your 122 positions in the city of Pueblo. So 76.9%. We used a consistent number across the board to determine whether or not we had a sufficient amount to use, to use data. And three, three was the number that we found statistically sufficient. So if there was not at least three positions, we didn't count it. We didn't count it if it meant it might raise pay or it might lower pay. Some of these points I already went over, but I'll just reiterate them. So surveying 122 classes, we appear, I phrase it, frame it as very ambitious, but the reality is, we would have less of a response rate if we put everything out there, because it is time-consuming for cities to fill out. Although, of course, cities are often willing to complete the data request because they might want something in return later on, like us, you know, working with them and completing their data request. However, we have found in the past that overdoing it will just result in less of a response rate and essentially less data to work with. Many classifications are in a series, so it is unnecessary to survey every position within a series. That, when I say series, I mean, they do, they have similar work, similar degree of complexity. They can historically be benchmarked to each other. And some positions are just special to Pueblo and are not in other cities, in a good way, but also in a unique way. And so those positions just don't exist in other communities, and that it was just a per se reason for not including them in this study. Okay, so just to reiterate the important thing, so usually when you talk with a compensation consultant, when you are evaluating compensation, the first thing you think about is, let's say we're looking for me, okay? I'm an attorney, and I'm looking for what other attorneys are being compensated in mid-sized law firms. That is the typical route to do, is just to evaluate what are the competitors paying for an equivalent level in a similarly sized entity, doing like work? Well, we take it a step further, and we also look like, we also look at the positions in the organization, because at the end of the day, now that we bring it back to a city, you might have, I'll pick on department directors because they can hold their own. You might have one director who gets paid as the same as another director, but one director might be exercising more supervision, and the other one might be exercising less supervision. And that is a bona fide factor that courts might consider when they're looking at equal pay, and especially when they're looking at pay equity in states that have already kind of developed their pay equity law in a more rigid comparable worth system. And I'd like to make that a little more tangible to understand, like what I'm saying or what comparable worth means. So comparable worth specifically looks at education required of the position, not that the person has experience required of the position, the degree of complexity of the position, and that has very literal definitions. So whether someone is administering a policy on a day-to-day basis, and if they need to do ABC, they will go look at XYZ of the policy, and it will lay out, you do ABC. Some positions might require using different theories and practices learned from, for example, obtaining a master's in public administration and understanding how to address, you know, complex variance issues in the community development setting. So that might require thinking outside the box, especially if you don't have a very nuanced, comprehensive plan to kind of lay out the format for you. Each position is different, but the questions asked of each position are the same when you're looking at complexity and also all the other factors. We ask the same exact question to determine the degree for each position. Impact on business, some positions have different impacts on the entity, and that different impact and the breadth of that impact coincide with the comparable worth of that position. Work conditions, for example, police officers are in the line of fire. Typically, one very obvious one perhaps is alignment, for example. In a city that has a utility and requires there to be alignment, it is a significant risk every time that person climbs the pole and goes up to make a repair. So some jobs are inherently more dangerous than others, and that has historically come with additional comparable worth consideration. Supervision given and supervision needed, that basically comes down to what is the level of independence required of the position to exercise? And when you're talking about supervision, we're quite literally considering how large of a system, how many people are we talking about, does this position supervise? So for example, you know, public works department is typically overseeing a large amount of staff, especially in a city this size. Let's see. So real quick, basically, our system, it factors in competitiveness externally and all these internal factors that I just went through, and it finds a happy medium somewhere to where you are paying a position more competitively, but you are also doing so responsibly in a way that does not favor one position over the other, based on non-tangible, non-definite terms. You could at any time pull a position, and using our system, you'd be able to defend the pay. It's not arbitrary. So sometimes that means a position might need to be paid less competitively because that is maybe the position, it's the nature of the work, that it's more subject to arbitrary pay. And so this system meets a happy medium. Want to go through some of these? Oh, it's right here, but it's a little blurry.
Yeah, so the charter in Pueblo essentially suggests that we look at the 85% of the market average, or that Pueblo should be compensated at 85% of the market average. So when we were conducting our analysis, we reviewed the positions at 85% of the average. So if we go through a few of these, you can see that there are a few large outliers and positions that are severely underpaid to the market. And especially, even though this isn't the market average, and this is below the market average, you can see positions like the chief of staff being paid 42% below that 85% of market on the maximum side of their pay range and 40% on the minimum side of their pay range. Another large outlier in this set of positions is the court administrator, which is negative 22% on the maximum side of the pay range, and then 7% on the minimum side of the pay range. And you may see a few of these positions are above the 85% of the market, but that doesn't necessarily mean that they're completely competitive with the comparable entities that we surveyed, so, because we are looking at 85% of the market. If we look at the set of positions, we have a large number of positions that are over 20% outside of 85% of the market average. We look at the Director of Information Technology, that is 20% below the market. Director of Human Resources, we have 21% below the market. The Director of Public Affairs, 41% below the market.
I chime in for Ethan. Okay, so I just want to reiterate for, just for educational purposes for some and maybe for the public. So generally, when we are going into an entity, unless they tell us otherwise, we initially look at what is the middle of the road when we're looking at positions. And so we will consider all the pay of the communities that we're looking at, and we will consider that baseline average. What is the average of all that data? In Pueblo, we have adopted a somewhat different approach. So we, here's the line, here's the high, the high end, here's the low end, average is here. Pueblo's historic compensation philosophy is paying 85% of that average. So this is the middle average, so then the new average is just a little bit below that average. And so when we're looking at all these positions, the red and green are reflective of, are they overpaid or underpaid compared to that 85% of that middle of the road? So I just wanted to clarify. I'm sure we'll revisit some of the nuances of this, of these components in a little bit, in a little bit more of the philosophy, but I just wanted to clarify.
And if we keep on moving down the list here, we can see the municipal court judge is 20% below the market, and then we can also see the Aquatics Program Coordinator, I believe, 26% below the market, and then the Marketing Program Coordinator is 21% below the market as well.
And in case it's difficult for anyone to see, I mean, just because we know it's a little tiny, the very far right corner is the maximum column. The second to that, the left, the one right to the left is the minimum. So that's comparing Pueblo's maximum for each position to the market and the city's minimum for that position to its market comparable. Those are the two far-right columns that we're looking at. Overall, the city is 4.88%, 4.88% below 85th, 85% of market average. The city is 4.88% when it comes to max pay. When it comes to minimum pay, you start folks on an average of 6.95% above minimum pay of 85% of market average. And it's clear for me on the next slide, I could have just turned there. All right. Here is a depiction of where the city falls. We put it into a little heat map. So you could see that thicker black line is the 85% of market average, and a bulk of the city's positions fall below that line within, can you read that, Ethan? You have better eyes.
Within negative 1% and 15% below the market.
And then can you read the amount of positions in the dead center of that circle?
So between negative 5 and negative 10% below the market, we have 18 positions.
And then?
Is it 15? And then 15, in the negative 10 to 15% range.
Thank you. Okay. So what have we come up with after doing all this studying internally and externally? We've come up with a uniform, consistent statistically salary structure that would put all of the positions in their respective order based on comparable worth. So the higher pointed positions in terms of comparable worth would be in the higher level pointed positions and then associated with the higher monthly salaries, monthly pay rates. And then the lower the position is pointed, that would coincide with that pay rate. So the top step, just again, the very top column is the 85% of market average, and then the starting step is 80% of that. So we have essentially the 80% through 100% that you see in the 1, 2, 3, third row down, that it means 80% of the maximum pay at the city that you would achieve under the structure. And that 100% is equivalent to 85% of the market average for that respective position, for that respective, for each respective grade. So essentially, where might folks be roughly starting in terms of the market? If you were to start somebody in the step one, in grade one, they would be probably starting around, like around 40% of market average? Is that what we came up with?
I think 60.
Oh, runs, oh, yes. Okay, around 60% of market average would be a close comparable, but that's not a statistically sound number to rely on because it's a percentage, it's an average of an average, of an average. But anyway, it would be starting, folks, 80% of It would be starting folks eighty percent of eighty-five of, of Eighty-five percent of market average, which is below middle, below middle. So farther down. Okay. So with this chart, what would look different? Not much, to be, to be honest. So the old had a, for your appointed groups, this is where you might see difference. Had an open range, a minimum and maximum only. And this isn't a city of Pueblo specific issue. But what I will say is what that might do is It might leave folks behind. It might leave folks in the dust. And in some communities, it often benefits. You know, traditional, traditionally men usually benefit from that system. And the reason that is, is just because pay is often not quantifiable. It's not measurable and it's not There's not a structure in place to provide sufficient parameters or guidelines when somebody's pay should be escalated. And some folks, and this is particularly folks who may not advocate for themselves as much, might also find themselves to fall behind. And so what our recommendation is, is to not have an open range, but to have a consistent structure Through, through your appointed classifications, not just with the management And or not just with having a structure with management and general service. The other component with consistency is getting everyone on the same amount of steps. So there is a term in Minnesota, and it's becoming more commonly Known in the pay equity world in the Midwest. And I'm sure it will find its way to Colorado because Colorado is usually, you know, advanced in, in employment laws. But Have an equitable relationship, you have to be basing pay in compensation, be basing pay On equitable, equitable factors. And so if you're progressing someone on a different amount of steps Than a different classification, then that's not an equitable relationship that you have within your structure. And so our recommendation would be to have uniform eight steps throughout all. So not a ten step structure for general service, not a seven step structure for management. And having a defined set structure for your appointed classifications. Now, we recognize and we value the importance of merit. And local government is moving toward having more merit consideration in their pay. Historically, that has not been the case. But we do recognize the, the value of merit and it can play in the folks Leading your departments and your divisions In basically leading the overall services that your city is providing. Those merit components can be very important. So we would still recommend progression based on merit. But the lesser groups, we would also recommend those be based on merit. But again, for some of your unionized work groups, that would be something that you would have to bargain for. So that is not a decision that can necessarily be unilaterally made. But it is usually our recommendation to have a system that factors in merit, but also consistency. And essentially, everyone would be on the same scale system. It does fall in about the same order that it currently does. It just really cleans it up, makes it more uniform. This is born in fire. We just have this up here for a reference. We're not recommending any changes when it comes to police and fire, those are your bargaining units That have, you know, already been, their process has already been handled with them. And so any change to their structure Would likely need to be negotiated. Okay, so this is kind of going to reiterate, but I'm just gonna circle back on this. So why, why is it important to consider A structure like Flaherty and Hoods? And that is because we have a structure that is more consistent with where public sector entities are going. We have worked with entities ranging from one thousand to over five million. And so we have a wide range of knowledge of what other public entities are doing And what might be a good fit for the city of Pueblo. Now, ultimately, you know your city best and you know your finances best, of course. So our recommendation is what you could do in, in a perfect universe and what you should do. And the other component is You know, this facilitates a more equitably sound structure that Gets rid or mitigates the potential for bias in compensation for folks. It makes sound business decisions in compensation and hiring. It helps provide guidelines for, for having more sound business decisions. And it's defensible. Our names have been quoted in arbitration. And it is a system that is statutorily adopted in the state of Minnesota at least. And other states are moving toward having a more rigid pay equity system. And again, it protects against decisions that might negatively impact protected categories of people, like people of color, Predominantly women before versus men. And so it just makes sure that Folks are being paid appropriately and based on measurable, quantifiable, determinative factors And not arbitrary, not arbitrary factors. Let's skip this one. Okay, so where is, hmm, I'll go into the economy and lose my voice.
Okay, so how does, how's the economy doing right now essentially? So this, the consumer price index has been dropping quite drastically over the past year, but it's sitting at one point nine percent. And the composite cola from, or coli from C two ER shows that Pueblo Has overall cost of living fourteen point nine percent lower than the Denver area. So that essentially Sort of justifies looking at the eighty-five percent of market. But at the same time, as a compensation consultant, I, we don't necessarily believe that that's The best route to go because even just reaching eighty-five percent doesn't make you As competitive with the market, but due to your Cost of living, it does make sense.
Yeah, I mean, from a, when you, just from a pure compensation consultant, right? We could all pretend money grows on trees. I know it doesn't. I work with about forty of my own city clients themselves, and I hear on a day to day basis, I wish money grew on trees for them too. But when you bring in a compensation consultant, We tell you our blunt and honest truth and what our recommendation is. And if in a perfect universe, What we would recommend you do is pay at middle of the road. You do have a tested Compensation philosophy. It's upheld and it is supported by the regional economy. Regional economy, economic factors. But we just want to give you our blunt and honest recommendation That we would recommend paying middle of the market if possible. With that being said, the results that we have put up there are in alignment with your current compensation philosophy. And they really strive to make adjustments in terms of, in terms of pay equity. So kind of putting positions where they should be in terms of pay internally. And also continuity of your eighty-fifth, paying eighty-five percent of average. That is what we considered In, you know, preparing this presentation for you. Uh, we're, how are we doing on time? Let's see. I think we can, yeah. Okay, so what are we looking for from you? Nothing really at this time. We're not looking for any council action. There You know, we've presented the data and the administration is the one who needs to determine What path they would like to pursue. And ultimately, when that time comes, they will provide you with, you know, financial information And preparation for budget discussions. So technically, at this time, we're not looking for any action to be taken Right now or today, but we are providing you an update just to tell you where the study stands. It's completed. And now it's almost decision, decision time. And we're giving you this, you know, update in advance of your budget discussions. And I'm sure this will be A, you know, a very invested conversation for staff and elected officials. Will be, of course, available to answer questions from city staff as you go through finalizing this budget process And help with calculations where we can. But what the city is looking at doing is a sustainable, they're trying to figure out what is a sustainable method To implement some of these recommendations. And so they, whatever they bring forth to you is to be a sustainable Method that is phased and financially and responsibly planned. And so that's why today we're not off the cuff recommending a specific approach that you take right now. Because it needs to be customized and tailored to what your needs and capabilities are fiscally and responsibly. With that in mind, you know, we could take questions, but we know we might have gone a little over time.
Well, thank you, gentlemen. Any questions from counsel? Counselor Gomez.
Um, when you talk about some of the key points, you made a comparison with Some of the outline of other cities, but you said that Centennial, Greeley and Boulder Didn't match up in reference to those rates, but you did say they're comparative in size, but you still use them to And it still would sway the outcome, wouldn't it?
No, at the end of the day, that, that data was not used to determine what, to put up there what the pay should be. We looked at it really for reference, like eyeballing it. So it wasn't formulated for those numbers.
So what community do you compare Pueblo to the, the rest of the communities in Colorado?
The ones that were in your charter, of course. See. So Arvada, Aurora, Colorado Springs, Denver, Fort Collins, Lakewood. Oh, Podry. Let's see, Pueblo County, West Metro, those are very, very specific positions. Thornton and West Metro Fire, and that was for fire Westminster.
Just States that we have to compare to cities in Colorado that are equal to us in population or larger. So The red ones that you see there are really the ones that we compare to, with the exception of Boulder and Greeley. They are close to us in population, but they're still not as large. So we check the census data whenever we do negotiations or go through a process like this, but So they, they are not traditionally part of it. So it's Arvada, Aurora, Colorado Springs, Denver, Fort Collins, Lakewood, Thornton and Westminster. You will see a couple of fire districts there because they're not part of their city. So when we work with fire, we need to pull their fire district data for the city that they would normally be a part of.
Some of these other communities that have a lot bigger budgets than we do, we're still comparing those as well.
That's a reality. True. I mean, that's a valid point. They do. And I, I, that is a valid point. And I believe that's where you're paying at eighty-five percent of average Comes from. That's one of the considerations for it. So that is something to consider.
Um, anyone else?
One more thing.
Okay.
When you talk about, you took about classifications can internally be benchmarked for equity. And since this is not an exact science, can you tell me what that means?
Yeah. So I'll do a more obvious one. If a position requires ten years of experience And another one doesn't require ten years, but it requires five years, then The position requiring ten years of experience Will get more points and in the end more pay internally. It would be inequitable to pay those folks the same. Now, this is just looking at Experience required, but it would create an inequitable relationship To pay those folks the same when their position, not, they might have a higher level degree, they might. But what matters is what the position requires. And those are factors that A, what we do is take subjective and we make it as Objective as possible. So we start with factors, those bigger categories. And then we consistently ask the same questions for each category. And then we have three levels, checks and balances, including our own Reality check review. And we've given reality checks. We have HR looks at them and the supervisors look at them. And so essentially, you're right. I mean, it's never a perfect system and there's always room for subjectivity. And what we've done to give you the most defensible data is to put it through the wringer And ask those questions consistently and point positions From our, in our recommendations, how they should be pointed based on the outcomes of those questions. And we validated the response to those questions and whether or not they're truth from three different, two different sources and then our Reality check review.
Since, since each city Has different number of department heads and or staff people that are on board. You could have a city that has fifteen departments. Some could have ten. Or they can have staff people that are supervisors underneath and salaries are not that far off from each other. So do, do you take into account the number of people per department and then figure out The comparisons that way or no?
We give a description of the position Of what we're looking for to the city that we're surveying the data. And then, so those, when I talk about internal pay, I'm talking about staff, employees and supervisors, I mean, answering. When we are looking externally, we give a description of the position, its requirements. And if it is a, do we go with seventy percent match or better? We'll include their data in the study. And if it's not, we throw it out. And what we have had to do to validate this data is go through their governing documents, their budgeting documents, Their requests for approval for additional staffing, basically their justifications to kind of quantify How many positions, you know, a department might actually have. When we had to split hairs, when, when basically sniff test, a city didn't give us A response that kind of jives with what we see, where it looked kind of Half completed. So we've, we've gone through governing documents of their own cities that we were able to get access to, to kind of validate that to.
Great, thank you.
Dennis, do you have any questions?
Yes, I do. Yes, I do. You know, one, one of the things that really stands out to me Is, is budget numbers for a lot of these cities that you've listed as comparables. It just as an example, if you take a, a city like Boulder that has the exact population as Pueblo, Their budget is three hundred and fifty-five million. Ours is one thirty-three. You take a city like Westminster, who has a population almost exactly like Pueblo. And their budget is somewhere around three hundred and fifty million to our one thirty-three. I think it'd be really instructive for You to look at the budgets You know, for all of these cities. And by the way, they're not, they're not pure budgets because Some cities have revenue for their electric utility included and some other things. So some, somebody would have to go in and really do a good job. But I think the fifteen percent CPI is Is probably justified Just on the basis of our budget. And also the cost of living and the cost of housing in our community. But did you at all take into consideration comparable cities, comparable population? And include any kind of narrative In comparing us to the cities up north That their budgets are twice, sometimes three, like Fort Collins, I don't know why they're there. Their budget is eight hundred and twenty-seven million. Their budget is 827 million with 169 population. So, you know, I'm, I'm just curious as to whether that even is entertained when you do a study like this. Thank you.
Counselor Flores, I just wanted to. Oh, there we go. Just wanted to answer that question, Counselor Flores. The, you know, the, we're bound by what the charter says. So the charter says for charter factor negotiation items, we have to compare to cities equal to or larger than Pueblo in the front range. So we don't really have control over that because we have to follow the charter. I, I understand the, the point about the budget differences and maybe Nico and Ethan can speak to that from their experience. But, um, we're kind of bound by that charter requirement to compare to those cities regardless of their budget. It's about what their community population is, if it's equal or larger than ours. So until the charter would be changed, it's, it's tough to change the cities that we have to compare to.
And council member? What you were kind of, um, what I think you were leading to, um, is a, is a practice and it's looking at, it, it's not common, but when cities have to look at, uh, cities that are larger and have, you know, greater tax capacity, they have a larger fund to work with. Ultimately, um, the cities can do things like look, they can make it, um, they, they can make the amounts proportional. So they can look at all the data, including tax capacity and population. And these are things that we've put, um, as they're going through the budget numbers and seeing what is financially sustainable. They basically would, would calculate out what would that number look like proportionally in the city of Pueblo that exists in, in Fort Collins, for example. You know, keeping in mind they have more money in these different buckets. We'll look at those buckets and then we will downsize them to, um, basically to be able to proportionally evaluate them. And then you evaluate your own budget for personnel administration compared to that budget. And then you can, you can actually compare how much are you spending compared to what they're spending? And so we've had cities do that before. I think that's what you might be referring to, but that's a, that's a possibility in this situation.
Thank you.
Any more questions? I have a question. Ms. Pacheco, how old is that charter amendment? Is it from the original or has it been amended? How old is that charter amendment? Because I just feel like we continuously have this conversation about size of city comparison. And there's obviously not anywhere near a budget wise.
Right.
You know? And what it does, I think, is it puts a lot of pressure on the city to be competitive. And at some point we're, you know, I mean, for Pueblo, city employee wages are pretty highly paid wages for this city in general. You know, for just the, the average job market.
Yeah. And I, you know, I apologize, I don't know if it's from the original 1954 or when, when it was in there. I mean, we can certainly get that information to you, but it's been a long time. I mean, it's, it's in there. I can tell you, I mean, I've been doing negotiations for the city for 15 years now. And it's been there at least that long. And I know it was predates me by many decades. So it is an older provision, um, certainly. And, um, it's, it's what we have now. So.
Yeah. And it brings a conversation that, um, comes, you know, comes in front of the public, comes in front of the workers. Um, and at some point, I mean, I'm sure that we can bring all the pay up to 85%, but then what's left?
Right.
And then what happens as we've noticed how we have been losing revenue, um, just due to inflation and so forth. And then we have to have layoffs. And so it doesn't allow us to, um, like I said, it just creates a conversation that can be somewhat divisive. Um, and maybe it's just something that we need to take a look at because, you know, for so long, we've always known the term public service, those who work for the government are in public service and they're really not the highest paying jobs out there. But they're pretty well compensated in the city for, in comparison to the job market in general. And so, um, it's, uh, you know, it, it's difficult, it's difficult as we continue to decline in revenue and be over budget by tens of millions of dollars. At some point, there's just a, we're going to hit a brick wall.
Well, I think it would be something that, um, you know, certainly would, I guess, I mean, it would take a ballot initiative to change that since it's in the charter. But, you know, it's something that.
It's, it's a discussion that probably needs to happen.
Yeah, we, I recognize the point for sure. Very different budgets, population may be close or much larger, but yeah, the budgets are very different. Understood.
You know, and I, I, I understand that the employees, you know, uh, we're talking about equitable. And they're saying, hey, they're getting this, but we're not getting this. There's a lot more to just that. And that's the money to have the money to pay.
Right.
Okay.
Understood.
Every, is everyone finished? Okay, great. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
And we appreciate your work. Thank you. All right. Well, it looks like we are done with works. Oh, I'm no. Sorry. Next we have contempt of court from Ms. Carla Sykes, our attorney.
I wanted to come and speak. I've had a couple of questions from some of you individually about contempt charges in municipal court. So wanted to explain a little bit to you about how the contempt process worked. Just keep in mind that Judge Dunford is now the judge in municipal court. He does his court, um, with different procedures potentially than what I did while I was judge. So all I can speak to is my procedures when I was there, but I wanted to explain it to you. While I was judge, it came, come in front of you multiple times. We talked about some of the contempt charges, but just so that you understand, just generally, people are charged with an original offense and the original offense comes before the court by a citation, so a ticket that people would receive. On that ticket, it has a court date, a mandatory court date, and it has a place where they sign to acknowledge that they have received the ticket and the court date. They can also come before the court on a probable cause warrant. So if they have done something, the police believe they have probable cause to believe that that person has done something, they can swear at an affidavit and the court issues a warrant for their arrest. And then that's how they're brought before the court. Okay. So if they receive an original charge, um, and they have that court date, they don't show up, then they get a failure to appear. That's a failure to appear warrant. Anytime anybody had a failure to appear warrant, they could come and they could voluntarily clear that warrant. So if they walked into the court, um, they could come up to the clerk's counter and get a new court date. Or they could come in, if the court was in session and available, then they could come directly into the court sometimes and be arraigned on the case and resolve their case that day. But mostly they got new court dates. The other way that they could clear that warrant is if they had police contact. So if they had contact with the police, they would be arrested potentially and taken to the jail. Or the police could give them a personal recognizance bond in the field. And so what that means is that the police will give them a piece of paper that says, here's your new court date, we're clearing your warrant, you're making a promise to appear at this new court date. And then they would sign that, the police would give them a copy of their new court date. And then they would have to appear on that court date. So those were the processes that were in place. If you recall, or some of you may not because you were not on council, but in, uh, late 2016, 2017, the jail was very overcrowded, they no longer took municipal inmates. And when they did that, um, and that lasted, not sure exactly of my days, but I want to say at least through 2022, that they were not taking municipal inmates because we had that and then we had COVID. Um, and so that had to be worked out. During that period of time, if the police arrested someone, they would get booked in and then immediately released. And so that's why we went to the personal recognizance bond in the field. So if police came across someone who was creating a disturbance or a danger to somebody else, they could still arrest them, take them to the jail, knowing that they would be booked in and then released. But hopefully that separation in time would help to diffuse that situation. But if they weren't creating any kind of disturbance, if they weren't a threat, they could go ahead and give them the PR bond in the field with a new court date so that they could come back and appear on a new, new court date. So what happened as a result of all of this, um, our failures to appear began to skyrocket. So the percentage of failures to appear went way up. Used to be where you had a courtroom full of people and all of a sudden we had 10 people on the, that would show up for the docket rather than 30. So we had a huge failure to appear rate. So every time someone failed to appear, if they didn't appear for their next court date, they would get a contempt warrant. And then, um, same process, they could come in voluntarily clear their warrant, they could do it through the police activity. Then they get another court date. Every time after that, they would fail to appear. So the first failure to appear was an automatic PR bond. So even if they were arrested in the jail, the jail would automatically release them because they had an automatic PR bond. The second time with the contempt warrant, they had, there was a cash bond that was associated with that warrant. So what that was telling the jail is hold this person if you can until for 48 hours so they can be arraigned by the court unless they can post this cash bond. But at that time, they weren't holding any of them. So the cash bond didn't mean anything. The third time, um, that they failed to appear, they got a contempt warrant with a no bond hold. So with the no bond hold, that's telling the jail, this person has multiple failures to appear. Please hold them for the, um, arraignment and then we'll set bond at that time. But again, at that time, because the jail wasn't holding anybody, the no bond didn't mean anything. So we came up with an agreement with the jail that they would hold people that after they had multiple contempt charges. That was the, if I believe, if I recall correctly, it was three contempt charges. Once they had three contempt charges, the jail would hold them for 48 hours for them to be arraigned. When they were arraigned on the jail docket, they would be appointed counsel, the bond would be set. And then typically they were released on a PR bond with a new court date. And that new court date was typically a, a pre-trial conference where they can meet with their defense attorney and then decide what they wanted to do going forward. But every contempt charge before it was issued was always reviewed. So if they, all these came up on my live docket. So when I was on the bench, if the person failed to appear for the docket, whether it be on a failure to appear or contempt warrant, I was looking at the notes to make sure that the person had notice of their court date. That, uh, they hadn't called in to decide, to tell me that they had transportation issues or health issues or some, for some reason they couldn't make it. Sometimes we get calls, I'm going to be late, my car broke down, I'm walking to court, whatever it was. So, um, if we had some contact like that from the defendant, then we would put their case over or we'd stay the warrant till the end of the day to see if they could get in and then we'd resolve their case when they showed up. If there was no, nothing in the record and there was notice, I could show that there was notice and there was nothing in the record for the defendant, then they would get a new warrant. So all of these cases were reviewed. We always looked at the notes to make sure that there wasn't anything else going on. When, uh, we looked at these, we also, uh, started looking at the fact that the person may be in custody. So the marshal began running checks every week against the jail population to see if our defendants were held in the county jail. And if they were, rather than issue a warrant, then we just put them on the next jail docket. So we were, we were checking to make sure that all of these things were happening. One of the things you need to know too is that, people can be booked into the county jail and have municipal charges, but they're not necessarily being held on their municipal charges. They have state charges or a parole hold that may be causing them to be held in the county jail. But they also have municipal charges. Sometimes when people get booked in on their state and municipal charges, the jail doesn't always let us know that they're in custody on those municipal charges, especially if it's only a single failure to appear because that failure to appear has an automatic PR bond. So there would be nothing to indicate to the jail that they have to be held on our charges. So some of those people would go through the jail. No one would know about it until we started checking the jail population, which the marshal started doing on a regular basis several years ago. So when people came in on their contempt charges, whether it be on the jail advisement or they came in in person, they were advised on their underlying charge or their, their contempt charges. They were always advised what the charge was, why the charge was imposed, what the possible penalties were, and what their options were, what their rights were. And for contempt charges, they were almost always appointed counsel. And when I say almost always, because some people that came in waived counsel. They would be advised of, of their right to have counsel and they'd want to enter a plea anyway. So sometimes they didn't have counsel, but I would say 90% of the time, they were always appointed counsel. And then that case was set over for a pre-trial conference. If they did decide to enter a plea on a contempt charge, jail was not imposed on the first time. It was a fine, maybe some mandatory community service. They were told what they needed to do and then they were set for a review hearing in 30, 60, 90 days to make sure that they remained on track and that they were getting follow through and some accountability and make sure that they were getting everything completed. If they got a second contempt warrant and they came in on that content charge, they were getting advised, appointed counsel, given the opportunity to do those things. They were advised of all of the penalties. If they decided to plead guilty or no contest to that charge, it was still typically a fine, some mandatory community service. And at that point, it was most likely probation. So again, helping those resources, putting those resources in place to try and help this person be successful, make them keep on track, doing regular check-ins. On the third contempt, um, it was very similar. So it was a fine, mandatory community service, maybe revoking and re-granting probation, maybe imposing a suspended jail sentence. At this point, once they're, they were in front of me for the third time, you kind of get to know this person, you have some information from probation maybe. And so you can kind of tailor that sentence to that individual. Every defendant is a little bit different. So the trick was to try and find something that was going to resonate with this person to get them to comply. And we always tried to use incentives and then consequences, and there was always a balance to that. So, um, so every, everything was a little bit different, but generally it always started with fine, community service, probation, then it escalated to, uh, maybe a suspended jail sentence. But there were many times where we worked with the defendant for a year or longer, revoking, re-granting probation while they were continuing to offend, get new cases. We are trying to get them into treatment, we are trying to get them mental health treatment. We are trying to get them resources, housing, food resources. We are trying to get them reconnected with their families so that they had that support system. So these were all the things that the court was doing. As far as the fines were concerned, everybody had the ability to work community service, to work off their fines. We offered community service for free through the municipal court. They were given opportunity to do treatment for community service, including, um, AA and NA meetings. They could do mental health treatment, um, for, uh, credit. Well, during COVID, they could do it all online and get credit for that. Some people, again, you have to meet the defendant where they were. So for some people, just making it to court was a challenge. So they would get credit for showing up for court, for showing up for probation, they get credit against their fines. So these are all processes that I and municipal court tried to put in place for the defendants as we move forward to try and get them to be successful. And as we move forward, um, you know, again, it's important to know that every defendant that was facing jail had an attorney, was offered an attorney. Most likely they were given an attorney. Every defendant that came before me on a contempt charge had the opportunity. Every defendant that came before me on a contempt charge had the opportunity for trial on that contempt charge. It was either a trial to the court or a trial to a jury. If they were facing potentially more than a hundred and eighty days, they had the right to request a jury trial. We had a couple of jury trials set on contempt charges. So they were given a defense attorney, defense attorney had an opportunity to request discovery. They went to a pre-trial, they decided they want to go to trial, we would set them for trial. Now ultimately, I think I only had one or two trials to the court ever go on a contempt charge, but that wasn't because they weren't entitled to it. That was because ultimately they entered a plea on that through a pre-trial disposition, through a plea agreement, and then resolved the case. So that wasn't anything that they weren't entitled to it, it was that they resolved the case. So that was one of the things I wanted to point out to the court, that they were always entitled to a trial or a jury trial. If it was a probation revocation, they were, they had a probation revocation hearing. So all of those opportunities, all of those mechanisms were available to all of these defendants. The defendants that were referenced in the article and the sentences that resulted from that were all the result of negotiated plea agreements. These plea agreements, these are not sentences where they came before the court and the court just automatically imposed sentences. These were negotiated plea agreements that were negotiated over time. So they had defense attorneys, they talked to the prosecuting attorney, the prosecuting attorney made an offer and they accepted that offer. Once they accept that offer, they no longer have right to a trial, they no longer have a right to appeal. All of those, all of that information is explained to them by their defense attorneys and it is voluntary. Now, I'm not sure on the particular plea agreements that were referenced in the article. Some of these plea agreements were done, well, all of them were done in writing, by written plea agreements. Some of them, the attorneys requested to come before me and put them on the record. When they requested that, they were put on the record. And when they came before me on the record, the defendant was always asked, do you understand your rights? Have you read this? Have you talked to your attorney? Do you understand by entering this plea, you're giving this up? Do you understand the consequence? So it was walked through on those, on those defendants. So that was always an option for the defense attorney to request to have it put on the record as well. This, the article focused on homeless individuals. And I wanted to point out that the, the individuals that received lengthier jail sentences really are a smaller portion of their overall population of people that come through municipal court. For the majority of people that came through municipal court, this process worked. Because by the time most people got a single contempt or even a second contempt, they complied, they got everything done, their case was closed. So the people that are getting the lengthier sentences are those people that refuse to really participate, refuse to show up to court, refuse to do any community service, that refuse to do any kind of treatment, that participated in treatment and then walked away from treatment. So these are, so this is the individuals and it's really a small portion of the population. So, so keep that in mind too. And keep in mind that while the, the few people that they've referenced in the article are homeless, we also had a large number of homeless population that were successful under this same process. So they were able to make it to court, they were able to do their treatment, get their cases resolved. And part of that is because of the resources that municipal court tried to provide for them. They were given bus passes. They were given referrals to housing. Probation helped them find clothes, provided them materials like notebooks, pencils, pens to participate in treatment, inpatient treatment. I can't tell you the hoops that the probation department jumped through to try and get some people into treatment. We had defense attorneys that jumped through hoops to try and get people into treatment and get them beds. And we had, if we couldn't get an evaluation done while the person was in custody, the marshal would go and pick up the person, take them over to get their evaluation done so they could enter into treatment. So the goal was always to get them treatment. We'd much rather have them in treatment than in custody. So that was always an option available to almost all the defendants. I can only think of maybe one or two times after the person had been in jail, released to go to treatment, then arrested again, put in jail, released to go to treatment and failed to complete that treatment that I ever denied someone being released to go to treatment. So that was always, always the goal. Community service credit was given for people that got their GED that again, did treatment. Financial counseling, we gave credit for that. If anybody came to community service and they needed and they didn't have food, we would provide meals for them after community service, as long as we had a heads up before they came in so that we could have that meal ready for them when they finished. Everyone, every defendant was treated with respect and compassion when they came through municipal court. That was the rule, we always did that, I always did that. And they were always giving every opportunity available to them to comply. People came in and said, I'm having a hard time, I just need another thirty days. Most times, they were given that other thirty days unless they had said that same thing multiple times. And at that point, it doesn't, doesn't mean much. So, so I wanted to make that clear to the court or to the, to the panel. But the other thing I wanted to know is, the article mentions that there's one in five people in the county jail were held on municipal charges. I'm not sure where they got that number because our beds have always been limited. For the majority of time I was on the bench, we were limited to ten to fifteen beds in the Pueblo County Jail. Once we got a, a new sheriff, that increased somewhat. But it's, it's never been, you know, what this number would be. I think I calculated with a population of eight hundred, be somewhere around a hundred and sixty inmates. We have never, to my knowledge, ever had a hundred and sixty people held on municipal only charges in the Pueblo County Jail. Now, there may be that there were some inmates that also had municipal charges that were in the Pueblo County Jail, but they were not taking up our bed space because we were limited on beds for the Pueblo County Jail. So I'm, I'm not sure how they, how they came up with that number. The other thing I'd like to point out is they, they talk about the sentences on contempt. They were cumulative in some instances, but most of the contempt charges usually carry, individual contempt charges carried between one and thirty days. Usually it was about ten to fifteen days per contempt charge. And the city attorney as part of the plea agreements routinely dismissed contempt charges. So if there were multiple contempt charges, let's say we, we talk about someone that has five cases with five contamps on each case, the city attorney would routinely dismiss a portion of those contempt charges. And then the other thing that the city attorney would do would be to do fifteen days on three of the contempt charges. Those are consecutive to each other, so that would be a total of forty-five days. On the other contempt charges, he'd run them concurrent. So there may be jail imposed on every contempt charge, but some were consecutive, some were concurrent. So, and that's what happened in a couple of these cases. I took a look at them. One pre-trial had nine contempt charges. Jail was arranged from fifteen to thirty-two days on each contempt charge, charges with six of the sentences running concurrent. So it was only sentenced on three to run consecutive, the rest were all concurrent. So that was a practice that was regularly done by the city attorney. And as I've told you guys before, and I'll just reiterate it again, no one was ever jailed for the inability to pay a fine, ever. If they didn't have the ability to pay the fine, they were afforded the opportunity to do community service. If they had a disability or an inability to do physical community service, they were given other options. I mean, we gave community service, like I said, for getting a GED, for getting your driver's license, for applying for housing, for applying for Medicaid, for Medicare. So there were all these ways that they could get community service credit and resolve their fines. There were times where as part of the plea agreement, their jail time was credited toward their fines to close out the case. But they were not, it wasn't because they couldn't afford to pay the fines. What we found is originally, if they came in for a contempt charge, they were only given jail on the contempt, their underlying fines and costs would remain. And so they were directed, well, after you're released on your jail for your contempt charge, you have to come back to municipal court, sign up on a new payment plan. Well, they would forget, they'd get confused, so they would get another warrant for failing to come back. And then they'd be confused and they were like, well, I did jail time for those fines, that case should be closed. So from then on, it was if they go to jail, we're going to credit their fines and costs. So the whole case is closed so that they're not confused and they, we're not setting them up to get another warrant because they forget while they're in custody. And a lot of these people had a lot of different cases going on at state level, at our level and different counties. And so there was a lot of confusion about what they had to do for each. So that's why probation was super important and we put them on probation so that we could help iron out those issues. The other thing I wanted to clear up is that no one received a contempt charge if they were in jail and that was the reason why they couldn't appear for court. So if someone was in custody and they received a failure to appear or contempt warrant and they came before the court and said, I was in custody on that date, that's why I couldn't come, we would look that up. If we could confirm that, those, those failure to appear warrants or contempt warrants would be dismissed, just outright. There were a lot of times that we caught it and said, you were in custody during this day, so we're just going to dismiss this. So as long as that was brought to the court's attention, they were never, never sentenced on any contempt charges that resulted from them being in jail and unable to appear.
Would you like to leave some time for some questions?
Yes, sorry.
Okay, that's okay. Any questions from counsel? Counselor Gomez?
Yeah, this thing's gotten a lot of press in the Denver Post in particular. And I'm just concerned with, was this contempt charge plan or scenario based on legal precedent? Or was this a new creative way to attempt to try and deal with the recurring and obviously frustrating problem because you said you tried, you and the criminal court tried to put this thing in place? And I'm concerned about, are we facing any legal challenges now for the city for the kind of things that has happened because of this?
So what I can tell you is that the city of Pueblo has a, an ordinance that is a contempt charge that includes as a, one of the elements of the contempt charge, the failure to appear. It is spelled out in the, the ordinance. I, I don't care how frustrated I got, I would never do anything that was illegal, knowingly illegal. So at this point, we had the contempt charge that was on the books. We used every tool available to encourage resolution of the cases. And that's, that was one of the tools that we used. I know the article talks about other courts. I don't know why other cities don't use a contempt. Sometimes they have other charges that may take the place of that. For instance, the state court has failure to comply with bail bond conditions, which is essentially very similar to the contempt charge because it's for failure that, for people to comply with appearing. But I, I, I don't, I can't speak to what other cities did. We used it as, as a tool and that's how we used it.
So you feel comfortable feeling what you did was not abuse on your end? Because what, some of the things I've been reading, it's kind of, it's a muse, it's a muse, excuse me, a misuse of the criminal system on a profound, profound level. And this is from several attorneys in, in the Post. And again, I'm worried about the city. Are we facing some backlash in reference to legal challenges that, that we're not being told about?
So you've been told everything. There's nothing that is pending, you, you have knowledge of everything. I can tell you that I reviewed it as the judge. We had defense counsel, we had prosecuting attorneys and this was never raised as an issue by any of them. They were all afforded due process. All of these are negotiated plea agreements that were entered into voluntarily and knowingly after having defense counsel, defense counsel appointed.
Was there a number of how many folks ended up on these contempt charges in the jail? How many, what kind of numbers are we talking about that went through this process?
I, I couldn't give you the exact number. I couldn't, I, I don't know how many individuals. Because the number that they're charging, that they're giving you are, is charges. So those were the number of charges. So I can tell you that they have requested records for about twenty people that I'm aware of. I, I don't know, that's twenty individuals, twenty defendants. But those defendants have multiple cases with multiple charges. So I'm not sure on the number of charges. The charges are different than people affected.
So the contempt charges are technically misdemeanors? And do they ever work their way up into another level? Or if the jail is a felon-only jail, okay, correct?
It's not a felon-only jail because they hold misdemeanors and they hold municipal inmates.
Okay, in reference to like domestic charges and stuff on, on that end of it, on the misdemeanor end? Because that's a pretty high level still. But on a contempt charge, what I had read was a thousand people that gone through this process and ended up in the facility, is that correct?
So what they, what they said is there were seventeen hundred, I believe it was seventeen hundred charges of contempt. That isn't seventeen hundred people, that's seventeen hundred charges. I do not know the number of defendants. And a lot of them were repeat defendants, so that would be, that would be something else that would have to be pulled.
Thank you.
Okay. I have a couple of questions for you. Were those requests for records after the article?
No, the request for records was before the article. Well, there were some before and some after.
Okay. And everything that you've cited to us tonight has come based off of you going back and going through those records in order to explain what some of the accusations were, correct?
Well, I haven't gone through the individual records. This is the, I'm giving you the general process of what happened in municipal court. Some of the people I've gone back and taken a look at, some of them I, I remember from when I was on the bench. And again, I mean, a lot of these people had success, so there were a lot of success stories too. And the one gentleman that they, they mentioned in the article, one of the things that we always struggled with was the lack of services here for treatment. So the gentleman that was in the article actually received more treatment in custody than he would have ever received out of custody. And that's neither here nor there, I just point that out just as, as sort of a reference for counsel because he would have never received that. And a lot of times, if he's now able to stay sober and remain connected with his family and his support system, then, you know, that's a great thing. But he would have never received that, that type of concentrated treatment outside of custody.
And who's requesting, what, what type of, is it, is the media requesting the Open Records Act? Or do we have, you know, ACLU requesting, who's requesting?
So the Denver Post has requested records, the ACLU has requested records and there's another organization that I do not remember the name of it that has requested records as well.
Okay. Anyone else? Thank you, Ms. Sykes. I appreciate you coming forward and having this discussion open publicly and transparently. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, with all that being said tonight, we are going to adjourn and return at seven ten PM.